Good morning. It is Monday, October 5th, 2020, and this is the regularly scheduled City Council work session. It is 10:00 AM. And the first thing on our work session agenda this morning is we have one youth city council applicant interview. We'll be conducting the others tomorrow night, but this applicant had a scheduling conflict. So is Harrison Hall in our Zoom meeting right now? And if not, I'm sure he's joining us momentarily if he's not here already.
I do not see him. Do you see him, Lisa?
I saw that Blaine, there was one that said Blaine Hall, so I promoted that one to him.
Oh, that's right.
That's me. So I know he's in school right now and he was...
Yeah, he might have had a class that ended right at 10:00 and he's getting to a room with a little bit of quiet so that he can join us. Any reason not to go on to item two and do our Historic Preservation Commission applicant interviews and then come back to Harrison Hall? Okay, so I see we're being joined by, we have some of our Historic Preservation Commission applicants joining us via Zoom. Good morning. Okay, you guys are both still on mute, but I think we'll take this in the order that you are on our agenda. And we have your applications here. We've had a chance to review them. And what we usually do at work session is we take this opportunity for council to ask you any follow-up questions we have. So first, Mr. John Elo, good morning. Welcome.
Good morning, Mayor.
How are you?
I'm doing well. I hope you guys are all doing well.
We're well. How about you give us a brief introduction to yourself and why you want to be on planning commission?
Well, on the Historic Preservation Commission?
Yes, because you don't want to be on the planning commission. My apologies. I just kind of have a planning commission on my brain because we've been receiving so many constituent emails and letters about it. So my apologies and thank you. We are talking to Spur Preservation Commission this morning.
Certainly, that'd be quite an honor, sure. Who am I? Well, my name's John Elo. I've been a resident here in Montrose, in Montrose County, for 28 years, going on 28 years. Moved here from Southern California, thankfully. I'm an architect. I'm actually, I consider myself retired, although there seems to be always something going on. And I guess that will be for my whole life. So just being an architect with a degree in architecture and urban design from UCLA. I've always had an interest in community-wide issues, and in this case, historical preservation. In living here for quite a while, I've learned a lot about Montrose, its history, where we came from, and where we're hopefully going, which I think is a very positive direction. And I think it's so important for us to preserve what it is that we are so proud of here in Montrose, in the Montrose region. We can date that back to Dominguez and Escalante, and their travels through this area. We can talk about the Native Indians culture. We can talk about agriculture and mercantile and those aspects that have driven and made our community. Obviously, the coming of water into the area is very important for the agriculture. We've served this region, served the mines in the area. So we've got this broad history that's reflected in basically where I come from in architecture. And that's what the Historic Preservation Commission is all about, is preserving that history and developing what we sense as the pride in our community. So that's not a planned statement, but it's something that's been wrapping my head around for quite a while. And it would certainly be an honor to be reappointed to the historic commission. So I'm open for questions.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Elo from my fellow councillors?
Well, I think John's been on there already, so he's got some experience behind him. Any comments from your past experiences with it?
Yeah, I think the commission is really going in a great direction. We've been together now for, see, this is my, end of my first term, which is a two-year term. And the amount of, I guess, direction and energy that we've developed is, I think, pretty good for a two-year span. The survey that has just been completed, which reflects or at least identifies areas in the city that we'd like to focus in coming up here in the next year, from Tortilla Flats to the downtown area. And obviously, the three particular projects that have already been put on the local historical preservation roll. So I think we're starting to get our feet wet, and it can only get better.
You guys have made some great progress.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you for the service you've provided in the last couple of years and your acknowledgement about how important this is to our community. And so I think it's great. I look forward to more years on the commission.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson.
Any other questions? Great, thank you very much for joining us this morning, Mr. Elo. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Bynum.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have Kevin Hupp, who I see is also with us via Zoom, so we can get him unmuted. And when you're unmuted, there we go. Mr. Hupp, can you tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in our historic preservation in Montrose?
Sure. My name's Ken Hupp. I was a born and raised native son that had to go away to earn a living and come back and retire. I'm a retired high school history teacher and school administrator, as well as a football and wrestling coach, and have an awful lot of interests in helping with our school system as well. Having grown up here, I echo a lot of what John just told you. And I served this past year as a fill-in capacity for a person that had to excuse himself from the commission. And it's been quite an experience. When I started as a history teacher, I knew I'd had to read a lot of assignments. But once these preservation commission requests start rolling in, we're looking at 130, 140-page documents in each one. So I'm back to doing what I used to do, which is read an awful lot. But in the process, what we've learned is a huge amount of our history, as well as what we want to feel that we want to save for posterity for Montrose. Our buildings here really do reflect our history. And the idea of having them on our city registry, as well as a possibility moving on to the county, state, and federal registry is pretty exciting. The downtown area really is a strength of what we have to offer for people to see our history. And I'm very proud to be able to stand up for it and work towards trying to see more and more buildings, as well as some of our districts created. And we've just heard this new topic called a cultural district that we're going, kind of excited to explore too. I thank you for the opportunity to serve this past year. It's been quite a pleasure. And I look forward to being able to do it some more if appointed.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from my fellow councillors? Well, I will echo town chairman Anderson's earlier sentiments. Thank you very much for serving. There is a lot of reading and there is a lot of work, and we appreciate the time and talents you bring to that project because they make our community and particularly historic buildings better because of it. So thank you very much.
You are welcome.
And then our third applicant this morning is Patrick Dwyer. Is Patrick Dwyer joining us by Zoom?
Yes, he is.
Great. Did you say he's on my phone?
He is joining presently.
Okay.
Go ahead and unmute your microphone, Mr. Dwyer.
I'm seeing you people, but...
Okay.
Fantastic. We can hear you now. So good morning, and thank you very much for joining us via our Zoom meeting. Like our previous two applicants, I'm going to ask if you can give us a brief introduction, who you are and why historic preservation is interesting to you.
Okay, I'm a retired architect living west of Montrose, or west of Olathe, in Montrose County. My interest in historic preservation is primarily architecture. And I don't know if you saw my application?
Yes, yes, we have that, yes.
Which had a brief resume on it. I haven't written a resume in many years, so...
It's an exercise to make sure you still know how.
At any rate, I'm interested in serving Montrose if I can. Montrose has been good to me. My first actual commissions were in downtown Montrose. Remodeled the Allison's store down there, basically a clothing store, and doubled the size of it by adding it to the existing building next door. And then I also remodeled the First National Bank for Jack Pixler at about the same...
Great. Any questions from my fellow councillors or Mr. Dwyer this morning?
I don't have anything. I appreciate that you're putting in an application. You're interested in helping. Thank you.
I'd be happy to do what I could.
Great, thank you very much, and thank you for joining us for our meeting this morning. We appreciate that you all were able to make time to do that, and we'll...
We'll be appointing them.
Yeah, we'll be appointing them at a council meeting, I believe, in two weeks and a day.
I think I've got, um, Ian Atha's application is in your packet. He did apply. He's on the commission currently, but he was unable to join today.
Okay.
So he is an applicant applying for his current seat. And like all of our existing applicants, has attended meetings and trainings and has been a valuable member of the commission. But I wanted to note that that's why you have one more application in your packet.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So we have four applicants in total, and we'll be making appointments at not tomorrow nights, but the following city council meeting. Thank you.
I think we're all pretty familiar with Mr. Atha and his involvement in the community as well.
Yep.
I do like on Mr. Dwyer's, that this comment that just being old isn't necessarily a qualifier. I think that's an important distinction on historical preservation, that significance has value.
Yep, thank you very much. Thank you to all of our applicants. We really appreciate it. Okay, so we're going to circle back and see if Mr. Harrison Hall was able to join us. Great. Good morning, Mr. Harrison Hall. How are you?
I'm doing great. How are you this morning?
Good. Thank you for making yourself available to us in the middle of the school day. I know tomorrow night you had a conflict. Thank you for applying to renew your term with our youth city council. We all have your application, as we do all of our youth city council applicants. And we have a list of questions, and rather than having you draw one randomly out of a fishbowl this year, we're going to select one from the list and ask it to you. And I leave it up if anyone feels strongly. You've worked the most with our youth city council councillor Anderson. Would you like to?
You can read it.
Okay.
That's fine.
I am picking one at random, so that this isn't like, I'm not picking it specifically for you. Let's see. Give us an example of an activity or opportunity for you, you'd like to see the youth city council organize. Take a second and give us your answer. Are you there?
You know, one activity that I know we did in the past that I know we got shut down because of COVID and also we voted off. I'd really like to see us bring back the Rock the Rec events and how we got youth, our youth out and active in different activities and different ways, for example, like the paintings, the basketball competitions, and how we did them all at the rec center. And we had great turnouts towards the beginning and the end of that. And then COVID-19 happened. But I'd like to see us try and make an attempt to bring those back with the COVID-19 restrictions and social distancing. Granted, that may not be possible. It would be nice if we could try and attempt it.
That's great. I think those were very successful for the youth in our community. And I think it's great the way the youth council put those together. And I think that's a great idea to look at ways you can make that happen again this year. Great. We usually just ask one question of our applicants.
Can I just make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Harrison, for reapplying again this year. You contributed a lot last year. And I look forward to hopefully seeing you on city council again this coming year. Thanks for your interest and your application.
Thank you very much.
I would like to ask one question, Harrison. What efforts do you make to reach out to your fellow students to encourage their participation in this type of events?
Well, I actually had some of my fellow coworkers that attend the high school attend these events. And I talked to them and invited them and their brothers and sisters to come out to these events. I had sent out emails to my fellow peers at the high school to attend these events and bring their family that are of age to come to those events along. Also, we did flyers and also brought those to the high school as well to get people to come.
Excellent, thank you.
Great.
I just like the idea of the exposure and experience that reaching out to these type of events gives you as far as reaching out in general and networking and learning how to contact and connect your peers. I just think it's an invaluable experience. Thank you.
Great. So Mr. Hall, thank you very much for joining us, making yourself available during your school day. And as you know how this process works, we're going to conduct the rest of the interviews tomorrow night. And then we'll follow that up by making appointments to our Montrose Youth City Council. So thank you so much. Thank you for your past work, and we look forward to seeing great things in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much for having me. Have a great day.
You too. Okay, moving on with our work session agenda this morning, we've got next up discussion items. And the first one on our discussion, and the only one, is the Adamson Family Trust Number One Gap Parcel Disposal. So I welcome senior planner Amy Sharp to explain what's going on with this one. We do have information in our packet, but it looks a little unusual. So what's going on?
Hi, thanks, Mayor Bynum. I'll share my screen here. And this one's a little different than some that we've had in the past. Are you able to see that? Are you able to see that?
Yes, we can, yep.
Okay. All right, so today's city council is considering or just receiving an overview of an ordinance that will be authorizing the disposal of real property owned by the city of Montrose. This gap parcel disposal is associated with the initial Adamson Family Trust Number One land exchange that actually occurred back in 2017. So following the overview today, they'll, we'll have a first reading of the ordinance on October 20th, and then a second reading of the ordinance on November 3rd. This map shows the location of this parcel. It's this small orange slither over on the left side of the map, and the black arrow points to it. So this property is located just east of Chapita Road. It's south of Baldridge Regional Park. It's west of Sunset Mesa, and then just northwest of the Grand View Cemetery. So the parcel is identified on this map as this yellow outlined parcel. And then it's actually part of a larger parent parcel, which you can see in orange. So there's this large parcel. I don't know if my arrow is pointing to it for you or not. And then there's another small orange parcel to the northwest of the big orange one. And then the gap parcel is also part of this parent parcel. So the one that we're talking about today that would be part of this disposal and ordinance is just the yellow piece of this entire parcel. So this tract of land is actually separated from the parent parcel, which is adjacent to Sunset Mesa.
Okay.
So the initial land exchange actually happened back in 2017, as I mentioned, between the Adamson Family Trust Number One in the city of Montrose. This map shows what that, how that transfer kind of occurred. So the city completed the land exchange to obtain property off of Anderson Road, which is the orange parcel that you see, the orange one that's shaded in to the east of the river. That was about, I think it was 11.93 acres. It was, or no, that one was the 16.2 acre. 16.2 acres owned by the trust, and that was transferred to the city of Montrose. And then the city of Montrose parcel, which is shaded in green there to the left, right by Chapita Road. That one was owned by the city, and that was transferred to the Adamson Family Trust Number One. So the reason this little gap parcel wasn't included at that time was because an additional survey was required for that gap parcel, and the parties didn't want to delay the land exchange while waiting for the survey. That survey has now been prepared, and the parties are ready to complete the final portion of this land exchange. So this gap parcel is actually a sloping terrain that the city can't access well. So that's why it was determined appropriate to include as part of this land exchange. It was intended to be conveyed to the trust back in 2017 with the original land exchange, but it was delayed due to the additional survey work that was needed at that time. And so now that that survey is completed, we are able to convey this gap parcel via a quitclaim deed. And no monetary exchange is taking place as it is associated with the primary land exchange that occurred back in 2017. Any questions?
No, thank you. That summary made a lot of sense. Any, no questions? Nope, doesn't look like we have any questions. So we'll see this on an upcoming city council. Well, you showed us the timeline. That was your first line. Perfect. Great, okay. Easy. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Um, under, I know, Mr. Alphorn, you wanted to talk about Russell Stover. I suppose that would come under staff comments.
Yes.
So, okay, so general city council discussion. Anyone got any meetings coming up, anything they need to let the rest of council know about, any items you're thinking about?
A couple of things. First would be CNU Advisory Committee. We have met with our committee panel as far as kind of the agenda and items we would look for in selecting a replacement for Gary. It was a very good meeting, very productive. We, I think, covered out a lot of items that we really would like to see in the new director here in Montrose. It was really productive meetings, I think. We covered out a lot of things on that. And he actually understands really deeply what we are looking for. So that's very hard, and I think it's going to be very positive.
Great.
The second thing is kind of on a totally second topic, but during our conversations with county, one of the things that we had noticed and mentioned when we did the restaurant update is that right now, currently, if an employee of a restaurant or a local business has to get a COVID test, they have to get a doctor's permission slip, and they have to pay in order to get the test. And one of the things I would love to have us explore is using some of our CARES Act money to help offset the costs for these people because they're not, a lot of these people aren't doing financially that well. And for having them to be forced to take time off of work and then forced to pay $100 for a test in order to go back to work, I think is a burden that we're putting on our citizens. I would love to see us explore the option and ability of using some of our CARES Act funding to pay for those tests.
I know, I know some of our neighboring counties are talking about how to help the restaurant industries with making testing accessible to restaurant employees.
And I'm not just talking about restaurant employees to be clear. I'm talking about anybody in Montrose. Because if somebody works at Lawmart, they're in the same boat. They're usually not financially secure enough that they can afford to take two weeks off of work.
Sure.
And I would just love to see us have the ability and option to look at and explore the ability of Montrose, city of Montrose, to use some of our CARES Act funding to help offset some of those expenses for those folks.
The state does have free testing across the state, though, so they could go to one of those locations. I mean...
It's not as convenient as you might think.
I understand that it could be closer.
There's multiple. That's a good point.
I'd want to see us work with the county, because I know the county is doing a lot of the stuff involving the making testing accessible to our community, making sure it's affordable, providing, is that testing going to take place at the fairgrounds? Is it back at the hospital? I just would want to make sure that the city was working with the county, because they've been doing all that so far. So I don't necessarily think we come in now with a testing plan and they say, hey, you know, we've been doing this for six months.
I don't want to reinvent the wheel.
Right.
Of offset the cost, so the testing is not costing an employee of a low-paying job $100 out of their pocket. Because then a recent newspaper article pointed out that the testing is $100 and will not be billed to insurance.
Sure, I thought it was $100 when someone wanted that test for their own, like if you were traveling right now.
It didn't specify that. It just said that if you wanted to get tested at the county facility, you had to have a doctor's note, and it was unlogged.
It's only a...
It sounds like we need more information to clarify that. That's, that's... Are the school kids that have to get tested, I can't imagine we're charging that, so... I like the concept. I need more information. I agree with that.
You said you had a couple items?
That was it.
Okay. Thanks. Anyone else have anything they want to bring up or talk about? What's the progress with putting stuff on South First? I see that pavement has been redone. Is there an update on that? We've gotten some questions about what's going on there.
What's the status on it?
Yeah.
Was the question?
Yeah.
Yeah, right now, we have, they were out there today on ladders getting the lights set up. So there will be lights draped from those poles that are out there across to allow for the temporary seating areas. We've received some of the matching seating to go along with Centennial Plaza. Jim Scheid told me we've received some of those, so those will be put out soon. And then the seal coating that went down is really a cosmetic, they did crack sealing, and then they did the cosmetic coating. It really doesn't, it's not intended to fill in all, any of the deep, kind of worn-out areas of the asphalt or anything like that. It's not a slurry coat. It's just a cosmetic thing, and it kind of ties it all together. And then we've had a lot of questions about, and we put out some emails and different things just to let people know. But a lot of people have asked, why do the seating there right now? Because it's fall or it's almost winter? The idea was to get some area for outdoor gatherings that would be safe under COVID for this fall, knowing that we would have to close the street anyway come February for construction. So we tried to get that message out. If we need to do that in a different way, just let us know. But overall, the street would be closed during construction anyway at the police department because they have to have some staging area to put large equipment, store their supplies, those types of things. There's a lot of really large items that come in, and it's very limited on space in that part of downtown. So utilizing the street for that storage area is really important. And so we're able to utilize some CARES Act funds to make that happen. And then we'll be able to reuse anything that we put out there. Once construction starts and we take those things away, we'll be able to reuse those either in Centennial Plaza, elsewhere in the park system. And so they definitely won't just get thrown into a storage shed and not used. People are asking about that as well. And then the end, the west end of that area, has been restripped, and it's nose-in parking now. So once boulders are placed and all of that is done being, showing clear delineation between that parking area and the rest of the street that's closed off, people will hopefully get used to the look and feel of a parking lot rather than a through street. And so you'll be able to come in off Cascade, nose-in park, either go... either go back out the way you came in or you can continue through, uh, the alley there next to the Elk Civic Building heading to the alley that goes around by Region 10. So there's a couple of different outlets there, uh, for people. And, uh, we're excited about it. We're hoping that we'll be able to, under the guidelines and in a safe way, have some kind of gathering space out there, whether it's for food trucks, restaurant deliveries, small events, those types of things that would be allowable. We're researching all those options right now. We're open to ideas too. So if people have ideas on how we can utilize this space, let us know.
Great.
So you are putting in something more substantial as barricaded versus just keep people from trying to drive through there.
Yes, uh, boulders will be placed, uh, here soon.
It's gonna look a lot better than like metal fencing or something. I like that.
Yeah. During the construction, the whole site won't look that attractive. It's just the way it is with the large construction project, but, but yeah, having the boulders there for the seating area will look better than just for your chain link or something.
Great. Thank you for, for that update. Does council have any other questions? Okay, then I'll move on to staff comments. I know Mr. Alcorn had an update for council about, um, the Russell Stover building.
Yeah, let's go back to July 1972. I was a happy little five-year-old boy in Chicago. My wife was seven months old and there was somebody in Montrose typing away at their IBM Selectric doing a Russell Stovers contract. Um, as you can imagine, in 1972, we were very excited about getting, uh, Russell Stovers planted here. Uh, what we have is a contract that is very much an inducement for Russell Stovers to come here. The, there's a couple provisions I wanna read. Uh, and the first one is, uh, important because on September 14th, Russell Stovers notified the city of their intent to, uh, purchase the property. Uh, so what they are doing is they're looking at Article Three, which says, "The tenant shall have the right and option to purchase the property at the following time if the tenant exercises, uh, at any time during the basic term of this lease, after the commencement of sixth, the sixth lease year and at any time during such extension of the term." Uh, tenant shall exercise, it's aforesaid option by giving the landlord written notice of the tenant's election to exercise this option and specify the date, time, and place of closing, uh, which shall not be earlier than 60 days after the notice is given. Uh, it goes on to state, "If said notice of election to purchase be given as aforesaid landlord shall encumenance and agrees to sell and convey the premises to the tenant on the closing date free and clear of all liens, encumbrances whatsoever." Uh, and the price is been set in 1972 at $1. Um, the, we don't have a option to object. Uh, it's very clear that, uh, once they provide notice, it shall happen. Now, what gets a little confusing is city councillors have a duty under the charter to approve any divestiture of property. Uh, so a, uh, ordinance will be drafted for city council to vote on allowing this property to be disposed of. Council could vote yes and, uh, continue on with the sale. They could vote no. A no vote is basically saying we're going to go into litigation for breach of contract. So it's one of those things, yes, you have a choice to vote no, but it comes with the promise from Russell Stovers of suing the city for breach of contract because the contract does say that we, we shall sell them the land for $1. Uh, there's been some question about, well, if we said ignoring that we really don't have a choice in whether we provide it is we could force them to level the land and turn us, turn back over to us a our land as we gave it to them before they started building on it. What it says, it says, "Unless the tenant has exercised an option to purchase under Article Three, tenant shall upon such expiration of this lease peaceably vacate and surrender to the landlord the premises in good order, condition, and repair except as otherwise may be permitted by the terms thereof." So it's not saying they have to level it down. They're just saying they have, whatever they are giving to us has to be in good repair, good order, and that they, uh, they surrender it. So even if we had a way to say, no, we're not selling it to you, Russell Stovers, they, we can't, can't turn around and say, level it and return it to, uh, its original, the land to the original condition. So that kinda took on a mind of its own, uh, and people in the community have been confused on what that actually said. Um, so, um, it's not unusual for a contract like this to be written rather one-sided when you're trying to do business incentives. Because nobody's thinking about 2020, uh, when we'd be sitting around wearing masks and, you know, looking at the closing of the plant. What, I know there's concern about what, and I talked to, uh, Russell Stovers attorney about it last week. You know, our concern is that it's gonna be sold, they're gonna make money, and then the business they sell it to is gonna fail. And then we have a crumbling, falling down, um, food processing plant within the city limits. And that could happen. I think what, uh, our best course of action is to make sure that when that is sold, we do whatever we can to make sure that that plan succeeds. Uh, I think we've heard, uh, early, uh, conversations, uh, a few weeks ago, uh, when they came and presented what they wanna do with the plan. I think everybody's pretty excited about that possibility. I don't know where we are in, in that process. But, I mean, I think that we can get frustrated and angry about what the contract doesn't say or we can be realistic and try and make it a success. So I'm sure there's questions.
I have two. First, for the last 50 years, that because the property is owned by the city, there's not any tax, property tax revenue generated?
That is correct.
So by turning or selling the property over to Russell Stovers, that enters that property back onto the tax laws.
Yes, and that benefits, of course, the county, not the city.
But that benefits the citizens of Montrose overall because it does put money back into our tax base.
They have a pilot agreement. So they've been paying the county. Uh, it's part of that original agreement. They've been paying their share of taxes.
So, but they've been paying, they're perfect. The second part is that with the brownfield, that by selling it to them, any kind of environmental hazard that has been introduced because of the, uh, candy factory's presence becomes the bonus of the candy factory, Russell Stovers, or the new property owners. Thereby releasing the city of Montrose from any legal liability for any kind of cleanup or responsibility for any of those potential environmental hazards. Is that correct?
That is correct, uh, that, and I think that what we heard from the, uh, the purchasing individuals, they were doing brownfield studies and I think that part of the, part of the sale will, uh, part of the purchase price will be recover, uh, will be seeking Russell Stovers to clean up. Cause there's one area with some abandoned fuel tanks in the back that there's some concern of. But, correct, the city, uh, does not have that liability. It's the, who owns the property.
So at this point, there are two major advantages to the city of Montrose to follow the original 50-year-old contract.
Do we, do we get any sales tax off of that once it sells? Sales standpoint?
Sales. Yeah, I, I do not think so, but, uh, I would.
Sale, I mean, whether.
Yeah, I would rely on Shani, but I don't think so. Uh, and that doesn't mean that, uh, use ta, use tax and things like that for the, uh, for the new owner would, uh, go into effect. Obviously, uh, the sales tax on a dollar land transaction is a whole lot, but, uh, you know, Russell Stovers does pay use tax as would the, uh, the company coming in.
I was gonna gather any kind of construction taxes for rehabilitation and reconstruction and repurposing of the buildings, so right, getting a little bit there.
Any questions? Thank you, Stephen. You know, I just keep asking you, is it really that cut and dry? And you keep telling, you're telling me the same thing. It is that cut and dry since 1972. It's not very many pages long. We really don't have a choice.
And I floated it by numerous attorneys saying, make my day and tell me I'm wrong, uh, but, uh, it, it all comes back to the same. Um, and I read it to you because it doesn't take a lot of greed, you know, to read what they said and uh, happy to provide the, uh, original contract to anybody that wants to, uh, take a look at it.
Sure. It sounds like at this point, we don't have a lot of choices in terms of selling the building and the property to Russell Stover for a dollar. And then I think it's in our community's best interest for us to get on board and see that whatever, whoever ends up buying that building and bringing their business here is successful. Okay. Thank you very much. Um, are there other staff updates? Are there any before I get to the city manager's office? Are there any department heads that have joined us that needed to give us any information this morning? Jacini?
I'm seeing one, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then I'll turn it over to Mr. Bell and Ms. Morgenthau. Are there any updates from? None? Okay. I think that we need our done. I don't think we have anything else this morning. So, um, I don't think we really have more sessions. I don't.
No, we don't. It's, it's all in your hands.
I mean, it just is. It's very anticlimactic. Um, okay. So our work session is over. If you joined us this morning, thank you so much for joining us. And we have a regularly scheduled city council meeting tomorrow night. Thank you.